I mentioned at the last meeting, just doing a little bit, some things a little differently in terms of things like the agenda and a couple of other items to approve them. So we'll try this and see how it works. If, are there any objections to the agenda as circulated? And hearing none, we will proceed with, assume that we've had unanimous consent.
Yep.
So that's how we're gonna kind of try that.
Sure. Consensus.
Yeah. So, we'll do that for the items that really don't have much need for a vote unless you have, just make sure you speak up if you have any issues. Are there any announcements from members of council? Council Graves?
Yeah, so again, the Whimsical Children's Store is still looking for donations of gently used items that a child three to 12 would like to purchase for a parent or loved one over Christmas. So the donations can be dropped off at the Arc, but we've also added a new spot now at the Centre Court of the Bridgewater Mall, so you can also drop them off there. And Cheryl Fugier and I will go in every couple of days and clear them out. We also, the United Way of Lunenburg County is still looking for gently used bikes. Bikes can be dropped off at the Centre Court as well, and these bikes will be refurbished over the winter and then given away to kids that can't afford them in the spring. Generally, we do about 65 bikes a year, so we'd appreciate the support. Thank you.
Counsel Thorburn.
Four announcements for the museum. And the first one is ATST on Sunday, October the 15th, at 2:00 p.m. at the museum, on 130 Jubilee Road. Refreshments include sandwiches, sweets, tea, coffee, and punch. Musical entertainment and a silent auction. Tickets are $10. So that's on Sunday, October the 15th, at 2:00. Then on the 17th, Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. at the Bidwana Fire Hall, the strategic planning session's being held for the museum. And they're looking at things like vision, mission, core values, and strategic priorities. So that's at the Fire Hall, and that's on October the 17th, Tuesday, at 6:30 p.m. Then on Wednesday, October the 18th, at 2:00 p.m., there's a sampler mophits and the Victoria Woman Hands-on Sampler Workshop for Adults on Wednesday at 2:00 p.m., Desbysé Museum. Participants must pre-register at the museum prior to workshop, and space is limited and there's no fee, so that one's free. And the last but not least was join Peter Eichel for a tour of the Bridgewater Cemetery on Sunday, October the 21st, at 2:00 p.m. Peter will be focusing on military history on the tour. Weather permitting, wear comfortable shoes. Fees $5. Correct change required. And you meet at the York Street entrance, so that's announcements for the museum.
Anyone else? Well, just a quick announcement. You'll notice that our new CAO, Richard McClellan's here, so we'd like to welcome him. Today was his first official day as the CAO of the town of Bridgewater, and he hit the ground running, and I think you had quite a few meetings today and met the staff within the building, so we'd like to welcome you
Thank you.
...to the town of Bridgewater. I know that you'll enjoy it here. We move quick, or so we've been told. And we, yeah, we're excited to have you on board, so welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have a speech or something you wanted to? No? No? That was a test, that was the right answer. There's no more announcements. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak for two minutes on any particular topic? Time for delegations. I think we have someone here who would like to speak on the cat bylaw for a couple minutes, if you would like to. If you'd like to just head to the podium and
I would like to speak on the cat bylaw.
Perfect. If you'd like to just come to the podium and just give us your name, and then you have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Del Crowback. I live in the Jubilee Road area, Desbysé, of the town of Bridgewater. On the difficult subject of roaming cats, council has been asked to make recommendations based on programs carried out by other municipalities. Rather than copy other programs, failed or otherwise, I submit that we need to innovate, not copy. I suggest that council initiate a live trap program using a pest control company. This program would be announced as a pest removal program and may be aimed at raccoons as well as roaming cats, which are, in my opinion, pests too. This program could be of any size, from one trap set once a year, or 20 traps set in several areas of Bridgewater several times a year, based on available budget. It need not be expensive. This live trapping program can be very effective if the timing is random. Once the program is announced, the actual setting of the traps would occur at any time for an unspecified length of time in any area of town. Traps can be set on town property or on private property if a resident requests one. The very randomness of this program, the fact that a cat may be caught, would amplify its effectiveness, even if there is no trap in the area at that time. The sight of a pest control vehicle would cause cats to be kept at home. This trapping program would be coupled with a voluntary identification tag offered by the town, based on the current dog tag. The advantage to the cat's owner is that they would be notified if their cat was caught, and it could be returned for a substantial fee to cover costs, similar to that for dogs. A cat which does not have a tag could be returned as well, but the owners would have to contact the pest control company on their own initiative, come and look for it, and pay an even more substantial fine. These fines could be used to reduce the cost of the program and could be split with the contractor. Cats not claimed would be held for a short period of time, perhaps five days, with the contractor. Cats not claimed, pardon me, but then euthanized. This is not a catch-and-release program. Raccoons and other pests too would be euthanized. Peril cats present a problem in that they may be caught as well, using up the capacity of the program with no possible remuneration. This program could be preceded by an extensive advertising campaign. This would emphasize that roaming cats are pests and that they annoy other residents of Bridgewater. Guilt can be a powerful tool. Cats are very destructive animals to birds, small mammals, and amphibians. In all my years, I have never seen a cat kill a rat. They prefer easier game. A roaming cat is a killer. If council does not wish to take any action on this cat problem, they should at least carry out this advertising program. I believe that this program can be very effective and for a minimum easily controlled cost. This can become a model that other municipalities will emulate. That's all I have, and I have copies here for council if they wish to study my absence.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
Nope.
No? Thank you. If you have a copy, if you want to just maybe, you can give it to Counsel Thorburn, and he can make sure that we, that staff get it, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on any subjects this time? No? Hearing none. Next, the next item is approval of the minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes from September 25th, 2017? Hearing none. We seem to have unanimous consent, and we'll deem the minutes as approved. Our next item is correspondence for action. Gardens of Grace request for proclamation. If someone is prepared to make that proclamation, please. Counsel Fugier?
Whereas October 15th is recognized worldwide and in other regions of Canada as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day to symbolize our support of Nova Scotia's Bill 179, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Act. And whereas each day in Canada, five babies die within their first year and eight babies are stillborn, as many as one in five pregnancies and a miscarriage, one family in Nova Scotia per day experience the pain of losing a child as a result of a miscarriage, stillbirth, or neonatal loss. And whereas there is no need, sorry, whereas there is a need to develop a greater awareness and understanding about the causes of pregnancy and infant loss, so we can improve the health care provided for pregnant mothers and their babies. And whereas the existence of their babies and infants deserve to be recognized, and whereas increased awareness of the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to greater understanding, support, and resources in communities across Nova Scotia. And whereas the declaration acknowledges the unique grief of bereaved parents and demonstrates support to the many families across Canada who have suffered a loss through miscarriage, medical termination, stillbirth, or the death of their infant during delivery or shortly after birth. And whereas promoting awareness of pregnancy and infant loss increases the likelihood that these families will receive understanding and support as they face the challenges of their distinctive bereavement. And whereas a day of remembrance honors the lives of the children and supports grieving parents, grandparents, siblings, and other family members whose lives are forever altered by the heartbreak of losing a child. And whereas such activities emphasize the town's commitment to supporting sensitivity and encouragement to bring the cause to light. And whereas the day is observed, we remember with remembrance ceremonies and candlelight vigils concluding the international wave of light, a worldwide lighting of candles at 7:00 p.m. Whereas the town of Bridgewater wishes to recognize the profound grief experienced by families who lose a baby. Now, therefore, I, Cheryl Fugier, councillor of the town of Bridgewater, do hereby declare the day of October 15th as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day in the city, sorry, in the town of Bridgewater.
A second there. Counsel Graves? Any discussion? All those in favor? Someone willing to make the proclamation for Diabetes Canada? Counsel Graves?
Whereas diabetes is a serious condition affecting more than 415 million people worldwide, whereas 11 million Canadians live with diabetes or prediabetes, and whereas 114,000 Nova Scotians currently live with diabetes. And whereas diabetes contributes to 30% of strokes, 40% of heart attacks, 50% of kidney failure requiring dialysis, EMDs, 70% and all non-traumatic amputations, and whereas there is a great need to raise funds for research into better methods of treatment, ultimately a cure. And whereas Diabetes Canada is leading the fight against diabetes by affecting, by helping those affected by diabetes live healthy lives, preventing the onset and consequences of diabetes, and discovering a cure. And whereas maintaining health and wellness can in many cases prevent prediabetes and type 2 diabetes as well as benefit diabetes management. And whereas this year, the Diabetes Awareness Month campaign focuses on prevention and early detection of prediabetes and type 2 diabetes, and people across Canada are being encouraged to take the CANRIS test at diabetes-test.ca. Whereas Diabetes Canada encourages government and non-government organizations to observe Diabetes Awareness Month and recognize World Diabetes Day in order to raise public awareness of diabetes and its related complications. And therefore, the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater hereby proclaims the month of November 2017 as Diabetes Awareness Month, and November 14th, 2017, as World Diabetes Day in the town of Bridgewater, and calls upon all citizens to combat this disease and its life-threatening complications by familiarizing themselves with diabetes, warning signs, making healthy lifestyle choices, and by accessing the best quality care that Nova Scotia provides to its citizens with diabetes.
Do I have a second there? Tanyer, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Disposed? Motion is carried. We're down to reports and recommendations, and if you guys don't mind, if we could just do the cat bylaw before we have Leon's team jump in, just because I know we have people waiting, not that they don't want to stay and listen to Clean Net Zero, but if we could just skip down to the preliminary report in your package. So we've received basically a recommendation to refer the matter to a future discussion session so that we can kind of dive into this and take some of the information, including what we've received tonight, and make a decision, one way or the other. Is someone prepared to put a motion on the floor?
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, refer the matter of a cat bylaw to a future discussion session for future, further considerations.
Have a second there, please. Counsel Graves, any discussion on that?
Nope.
Counsel McGinnis?
Have we received enough information to have a discussion on it?
Well, I guess that's part of the need for the discussion session, is to kind of flesh out what more information we need.
I'm not sure what's going to accomplish. We, on August 14th, we referred just to staff for, to investigate and report, and I'm assuming this is the report?
I don't have any, yeah, like this is, this is all the documentation we have.
This is it. You know, ideas like Mr. Trobeck suggested here this evening, some issues like that, you know, I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish. I'll vote in favor of it, I'd like to have some more information. I don't want to prolong this. I think it's a problem we have to address, one way or another. And so I don't, I don't want to go to a discussion session and have, you know, just sit here and look at each other and say, well, what are we going to do?
Yeah, Counsel Graves?
Well, people are doing things now, the town of Amherst and others, would be interesting to see how successful they are with their programs, what their challenges are, and I think we could ask those questions at the discussion session and get the answers back. Now, we can do it beforehand, but it'd be interesting to see how they're faring with their cat bylaws and their dog bylaws.
Yes, I think it's pieces of information like that, like the information we just received from tonight, Mr. Trobeck as well, and any other information we can gather and kind of have that discussion, add a discussion session.
Yeah, and same thing with raccoons. They're growing wild in town now. You can see them pretty much anywhere. And the other day, a neighbor came over and two skunks went across the drive with them. Good thing to keep Sam home, but I like the catch-and-release program, catch them and release them. Not with cats, but with raccoons and other animals you could.
So I guess we just need to have the, have the full discussion on what we really want.
And have a policy.
Because they don't know if we have a clear path forward yet.
Yeah.
So certainly, the one report isn't enough to make a decision. I think you'll agree that that alone is not enough. So we need, you know, we need information from other municipal units, as well as from citizens. Counsel Fugier?
Yeah. Is that possible to have some of those answers before we go into a discussion session? Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. And of course, questions that come up, please make sure that you refer those through the CAO so that we can at least start to gather that information. We can also make an appeal to citizens to bring forward some suggestions that they may have, and you guys are all in the public doing that now, I'm sure. So it's just making sure we gather that and put that all into the pile and go through it. Counsel Thorburn?
I just like the idea of having an information package made public for the residents to know what their roles and responsibilities to the pets are, and what obligations they have, and what obligation the town has to have to make it work for everybody.
So I guess that's part of it. If, if all we do going forward is an education session on the rules, then that's one option. Is it expanding that to have a bylaw that doesn't allow cats to roam? That's, that's where we need to know what's, what's going to work and what's the balance for the town. Any other questions on that? Okay, you ready for the motion or ready for the vote? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So thank you for your input, sir. We'll put that into our information session. Okay, Mr. DeVried is here to discuss Clean Net Zero, the program launch, and allocation of PACE financing. So this was a pretty, pretty exciting document to read, to hear about, to read about what net zero is, and I'm sure you're going to explain that for the public and go through this with us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Welcome, Mr. McClellan. Nice to have you here. So, we've done quite a bit of work behind the scenes to arrive at the moment where we are here. Council will remember that in January, you approved a letter of support toward Clean Foundation whereby the town would participate in the program if they were successful in applying for a substantial amount of funding from Natural Resources Canada. So, in part, the reason for tonight's presentation to you is to just confirm that they did get the money. This is quite an exciting opportunity for the town to take part in a national caliber pilot program. So, in order to assist me with this evening's presentation, we have Matt Davis and Derek Peters with us tonight, and they're actually going to provide you with the most of the information. Just before I call them on, I'm going to say you do have a staff report in front of you. Honestly, it's kind of just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of exciting detail and interesting material we could have covered. We decided to keep it really brief for you. We can get into some questions if you're interested after the presentation. Two things that I just wanted to point out before they start is, number one, you may be wondering why in the staff report that went to you in January, we talked about an opportunity to have up to five homes in Bridgewater take part in the program. That's now been increased in the, in the current staff report that you see to allow for up to 10 to take part in the program. That's because unfortunately, there's been some question as to whether some of our neighboring municipalities may be able to participate in the program or not. And in order to protect the extent of the program that we have promised to Natural Resources Canada, it may be necessary for the town of Bridgewater to take in all 10 participants of the program, and we've provided you with some of the numbers associated with that in the staff report. We can delve into that as well. It's, it's a hedge. It's a just-in-case. The other thing that I did want to say, though, despite that small setback, we've had some very, very exciting partnerships, including with a local financial institution, the La Havre River Credit Union, who has really stepped up to the plate. And we are now at the point where we may even be able to offer some net zero, net zero home energy upgrades without any PACE financing as part of it. So we have the private sector basically stepping up to the plate and offering net zero upgrades instead of the town needing to put dollars on the table. Not for everyone, but for certain homeowners, that may make a lot of sense. So, some very exciting developments. I can't thank the staff, the Clean Foundation staffer with us tonight enough for their, for their activities. And there is more information coming on this program, including through a legal review. If there's anything that comes out of that or other important information to account for council, we'll let you know. Without further ado, Derek Peters and Matt Davis. Matt has been brought on to actually work on the program for at least 18 months, and Matt is housed on the fourth floor of Bridgewater Town Hall. So we've offered an in-kind location for him, and I thought tonight would be a nice opportunity to introduce him to you as well for when you see him around. But I don't know who's going to take it first. Matt, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Davis. I'm the project coordinator for the Clean Net Zero program. And as Leon mentioned, I'll be here for the next 18 months to try and help run this program on the ground.
My name's Derek Peters. I'm a program coordinator with Clean Foundation. I am stationed in Dartmouth, but after seeing Matt's office on the fourth floor, I might move here.
Okay, so Clean has had a successful history in implementing energy efficiency-related projects. This includes two of our current projects, which is home warming as well as clean energy financing, which is in partnership with the town of Bridgewater. Through these programs, Clean's energy advisors have performed over 18,000 home energy assessments. In addition to the clean energy financing program that we are currently in partnership with you with, other partnerships have included Energize Bridgewater, an electric vehicle feasibility study that was done a few years ago, as well as non-energy specific programs like the Clean Leadership Program, which was formerly known as the Nova Scotia Youth And now we would like to continue that partnership with Clean Net Zero. So the proposal submitted in early 2017, as Leon mentioned, was successful, and the goal of this project is basically to take 10 homes to net zero. And not only providing the technical pathway to net zero, but also providing homeowners with financing options to allow them to take advantage of these opportunities and invest in their homes. So a net zero energy home is a home that's designed, modeled, and constructed to produce as much energy as it consumes on an annual basis. So, and this net zero energy type of home is becoming the new building standard. So for the Clean Net Zero project, this basically means a clean energy financing program with deeper retrofits, as well as the addition of renewable energy. This will include a focus on rural Nova Scotia, as we are currently focusing on the Bridgewater area. And this is a Natural Resources Canada funded project, and it is also multi-sectoral in terms of its partners. So to name a few, the town of Bridgewater, Clean Foundation, the La Havre River Credit Union, as Leon mentioned, and Efficiency Nova Scotia. So, the main obstacles that have limited these types of projects include a lack of public education and engagement, a lack of contractor and tradesperson education and skill development, as well as a lack of low-interest upgrade financing for these types of projects. Clean Net Zero will take a three-pronged approach to reduce these obstacles in these net zero retrofits and this program. So this is hard to make out on the screen, but it was provided, I believe, in the staff report, which is basically a timeline of the whole project. Currently, we are wrapping up Phase One and working on ramping up Phase Two. So Phase One includes a scoping study, which included a stakeholder risk assessment. It includes some contractor research that's currently being analyzed, and results are being developed from it to improve contractor capacity for these type of retrofits, and these all will inform the overall project design. Once this is complete, as I said, we're starting to ramp up our Phase Two, which is below there. It'll include developing an online presence in the form of a web hub, as well as developing technical workshops and other community outreach events. And to discuss more on the scoping study and the risk assessment, Derek will take the lead on it.
Sure. All right, thanks, Matt. So as Matt said, I'll be talking about the risk assessment, which is the scoping study and risk assessment and kind of a feasibility study that Sustainable Alternatives Consulting put together for us over the last number of months, and that's led by Sonia Pershram out of Ontario. So Sustainable Alternatives Consulting has completed this really comprehensive feasibility study, risk assessment, and has thoroughly investigated similar programs across North America, and has also performed detailed interviews with stakeholders involved in the project, including La Havre River Credit Union, Bee Free Homes, which is a local net zero expert, Nova Scotia Community College, town of Bridgewater, Clean Foundation, Efficiency Nova Scotia, and also the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. As Leon mentioned, the District of Lunenburg may not be involved as a PACE participant, but it's really exciting to, to also give the chance for constituents in the District of Lunenburg to enter into a direct agreement with the La Havre River Credit Union. And it works really well as a pilot project to have both a financing model through the credit union alone, and with the credit union and town of Bridgewater in combination to see what system works well or better, I guess. Trying to work this thing. So in terms of the key findings, most importantly, Sonia Pershram has found that Clean Net Zero is indeed a feasible program. And within the report, Sonia has identified several key guidelines to reduce risk for all parties involved going forward. And I should note that we are still awaiting a final legal opinion that will be, that will accompany this study. So within this report, the first point is that it is recommending that the max PACE value should be between 15 and maximum 20% of a home's value. This means that the town's contribution to the net zero retrofits will be similar to the current clean energy financing limits. The total amount with the La Havre River Credit Union amount combined, it will be different depending on the home we're talking about and also the homeowner associated with that home, or homeowners. home, or homeowners. Second, La Havre River Credit Union will take on, likely will take on the majority of the financing, and will be offering comprehensive financing and credit check. This is, of course, within the credit union's wheelhouse and will greatly reduce the financial risk associated with this program. And I guess additional to that, we can add on the eligibility criteria that the town has already developed for clean energy financing, such as a five-year municipal arrears check. Third, PACE financing in Nova Scotia is currently what they call accelerated. This means that when one payment or a few payments are missed, then the entire amount of the PACE financing is put in lean status. Now, in other jurisdictions, only the amount owing when the payments are missed is placed in lean status. This is being investigated by the legal opinion and by the scoping study. And this direction, where it's not accelerated, could really reduce the risk of homeowner tax sale. Fourth, the PACE pilot will not increase Town of Bridgewater administrative costs. The development costs for this project are being covered by the Natural Resources Canada funding. This includes things like the scoping study and Matt's salary. And combined with that, the clean energy financing system is already in place in Town of Bridgewater, so we'll be piggybacking on a lot of that process. In terms of town benefits of this program, there are a lot of them. I just want to focus on a few key ones here. First of all, it's going to be showing constituents that the town is confronting rising energy costs as well as deteriorating infrastructure in the bounds of the town. Second, local tradespeople will receive free-of-charge, in-depth technical training on this innovative process, this net zero retrofitting process. Contractors such as Trinity Maintenance and Rhinos really show that, you know, when a company invests in energy efficiency, it can really pay dividends. As I mentioned, no additional cost to the town, very little administrative staff time, and Clean Net Zero will be leveraging the clean energy financing process. And this is, it really is an innovative project that is paving the way nationally. There's going to be a lot of eyes on this project from across Canada, and it'll continue to show that Bridgewater, Town of Bridgewater is really leading the way in sustainable programs. And last, it'll be, it'll help implement Bridgewater's community energy investment plan. This is one key component of that plan, and we're really excited to bring it into fruition. In terms of next steps, we'll be developing, as Matt said already, we'll be developing a web hub and a marketing plan right away to reach out to prospective participants. In particular, we'll be reaching out to participants at the upcoming Energize Nova Scotia event in the end of October. And we'll also be focusing on targeted marketing and key, within key neighborhoods and events to really try to garner some support for this. After we attract the participants, we'll be starting the more exciting part, which is creating these individual net zero plans and bringing them to implementation, and we're really excited for that. So what do we need from the town? Well, first of all, we really, we really, we're keen to work to continue this partnership that Matt has outlined that we've had for a while, and this Clean Net Zero is the next step in the partnership. We also are asking for in-kind office space for the Clean Net Zero project coordinator. As we mentioned, Matt is on the fourth floor right now. And last, to allow financing for the Clean Net Zero retrofits as part of the current clean energy financing allocation. And I'll hand it over to Leon to talk more about that.
Thank you, Matt and Derek. I told them that our mayor insists on 10-minute presentations, so I think they followed that one well. So, in the staff report that you see before you, of those three requests that were made to us by Clean Foundation, essentially the first two have been granted. The town's letter of support and in working with the CAO, those requests were approved. And so the last item there is, in consultation with our Director of Finance, staff recommends that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater allocate PACE financing for up to 10 participating Bridgewater homes out of the existing PACE financing ceiling of $300,000 per fiscal year. There are a few numbers in the report to illustrate why that may make sense, but of course, I'm very happy to answer any questions you may have about it, as are Matt and Derek.
Questions from members of council. Deputy Mayor.
Leon, you recommend, or suggest, I should say, you don't recommend, you suggest that most property values that would be applying for this might be 150 to 250, I believe. What happens if a $400,000 property, because some of these big, older homes are probably some of the worst for energy management or energy infrastructure, so on? What happens there? How do you decide, how do you rank that in the big scheme of things? Do you know what I mean? Like a $400,000 home, who needs that max 20% is going to take away a lot of cash out of the fund very quickly, leaving probably little for possibly 10, nine others, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so thank you for your questions. So, at this time, we have not contemplated a hard cap. I think in part, what we're going to do is because we're going to go through an extensive vetting process to figure out who in the community is interested even in the program, we didn't want to put too many limits on participating homes. It's possible that in a situation like that, if it's deemed that it's going to absorb too many program resources, that will slide the percentage a little lower of the town financing and have them rely more on an external financing body. Basically, it's going to be a bit of a mix-and-match process. Frankly, we're not even sure if we will find 10 participating homes from Bridgewater. So it's really a matter of just working with whoever comes forward and trying to make it work for as many as possible. I don't know if the Director of Finance has anything you want to add to that. Is that right?
Counselor Thurman.
Keep checking with these guys.
I know it's going to be cost neutral, so they can't cost you money to take part in the program. But is there a time period that you estimate for payback? When, if you invest $30,000, when we recoup that? Is it a long, another fear, or is it a shorter time?
I think that might be a good one for you guys to answer.
Sure. Within clean energy financing, we have the one-to-one debt-to-savings ratio, and that's over a 10-year financing period. Now with the net zero program, it's going to be, well, first of all, the paybacks for solar photovoltaic are not going to be 10 years. They're going to be slightly above 10 years. So if it is slightly, say the payback is between, say it's around 15 years, then if the financing period is over 15 years, then we can still achieve that one-to-one debt-to-savings ratio. It's just over a longer period. It's also possible that a homeowner is willing to invest at a longer payback period, because some of these retrofits will last for the lifetime of the home. Say, you know, extensive insulation retrofits will last much, much longer than 10 to 15 years. So if the homeowner is willing to take on that longer payback retrofit, then it is possible. But we are hoping, one of the major benefits of this program is the cost-effectiveness, cost-benefit analysis that our energy advisors do, and we will have a very good idea of what the payback will be for each retrofit, and we'll be able to keep the homeowner and the lenders apprised of what that cost-benefit analysis looks like before going forward.
Okay, so how much, or what portion of the total amount could the homeowner invest in your project? If I was going to invest at all, it'd be kind of pointless to go through you, but do you have a ceiling on how much that may be required by the homeowner to make it? Is there any limit on what the homeowner can invest?
Well, there will be a limit based on what type of, how much financing is available. So within the PACE unit of the financing, of course, that limit is based on 15 to 20% of the home's value. And then La Havre River Credit Union will have their own checks and balances to make sure that their financing is also safe. So if, you know, if you have a lower-value home and lower equity in that home, then the overall limit will be lower for you compared to a home that has much higher value and much more equity within that home. So there are limits, but it'll be different in every context.
Every case will be different.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
So, the Town of Bridgewater has been very active in sustainability programs. And also another thing that's been very important to us is addressing poverty kind of through backdoors. We can't necessarily control the price of shelter, but we can implement programs that help people address their housing costs and day-to-day costs. This being one of them, for sure. The La Havre River Credit Union taking over the financing component certainly helps to the security for the Town of Bridgewater. But does it reduce the ability to impact the lives of people who are maybe struggling to cover some of those costs and that this could really impact their lives? Does it affect it any differently than the PACE program did? Or are we kind of on the same page and just moving along with a different partner?
Maybe I'll think of first that. So poverty reduction and working with homeowners who maybe are at the lower end of the affordability scale has been a constant point of tension in the design of this program. Obviously, higher home values automatically allow themselves toward higher financing amounts. On the other hand, it could take, you know, it could take $60,000, $70,000 to do a massive energy retrofit to a small home or a big home. I mean, it doesn't, you know, these things are not necessarily connected. What we have, what we have tried very hard to do is to design the program in such a way so that there's options for the homeowner to acquire financing from different sources. There are definitely going to be a bunch of people in Bridgewater for whom this program will not be a fit, the way it's been designed in the pilot year. But if we tried to force it to work for every single homeowner in Bridgewater, we probably wouldn't be able to design something that just works and that we can get off the ground and then tweak. So our goal is to make sure that we try to fit into the program, you know, a few homes that have lower values, maybe, that have deferred maintenance issues, possibly where homeowners are living, you know, close to the edge of their financial feasibility. And then we're going to need to work with a number of homes where the homeowner is more well-off or has access to greater financial resources in order to get our different, because we're trying to balance also getting different types of homes through the program, right? Your 1970s bungalow or your 1960s bungalow, as well as your, you know, turn-of-the-century, you know, two-story square, whatever, house. So it's going to be, like I said earlier, a bit of a mix-and-match game. What I will say is that for anybody who can't qualify financially to take part in this program, there's always the base program. There's always clean energy financing, and what we've been seeing from the base program is that people have been having payback periods of close to five years on average on that, cash flow positive, starting in year one, you know, $10,000, $15,000 in financing provided by the town with no need for a credit check. So those types of options will, we will keep in mind, and we will direct people at the program that's best for them. Does that answer your question?
Perfect, yes.
Counselor Graves.
So I guess two questions, and it's getting back to the type of house that will be retrofitted. There must be a sweet spot, meaning in terms of age, where it makes economic sense to retrofit a house. So for example, a house born, built in 1920 is a lot different from a house built in 1940, in '60, in the '90s, and then five years ago. So I would imagine it's, as you get more, as the, as the homes become younger, they become less expensive to retrofit because the building codes or the standards were a lot higher as the house, for the newer houses. So is there a sweet spot in terms of age, do you know? Like a, like a house from the 1940s would be an ideal candidate as they're not too expensive, but they're, does that make it, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think there's necessarily a sweet spot, but I mean, an older home is more likely to have less insulation and older windows that have to be upgraded and things like that. So it will be, it can be much more expensive for an older home, 1920s-built home, to achieve net zero than a newer home. Now, I should mention that, you know, the net zero program, net zero will be our guiding goalpost, I guess. But what we'll also be focusing on is providing the path for each house to get to net zero. And perhaps this first phase of financing will not get that older house built in the 1920s all the way to net zero, but we will provide a path to get them as close to zero gigajoules of energy per year as possible. And also that path will ensure that whatever retrofits they invest are not disallowing a future retrofit that would be great to get it to that zero gigajoules of energy per year. So providing that long-term path, in some cases, will be just as important as achieving a net zero home in the first financing portion with a newer home or a home that's closer to that goal already.
Okay, and just one other thing in regards to the homes. So the Town of Bridgewater, there might be 50 new homes or 25 new homes built every single year. So is there a provision to include maybe one brand-new home? Because if the goal is to reduce, is to bring more homes on the net zero, and the goal is to reduce carbon emissions, and new homes are going to have that problem, does it make sense to do it, one or two as they're being built, as opposed to waiting for five years and having them apply to have the, because it would be a lot cheaper to do it as the house is being built from the ground up, right? Just throwing that out there. I've mentioned it before, it just, for the record.
Within this program, this is a net zero retrofit program. However, I mean, it would be great to work with a fairly new home that is built according to, you know, this decade's or, you know, last year's building code, and it'd be much easier. Some of these homes are already being built net zero-ready, where you just have to plug in the solar PV, and then you will have a net zero home. So that could be part of the pilot project, where we take on a home that's that close to being net zero already. But I don't, within this pilot project, we won't be able to accept a home being built, but this is a pilot project, and this could be something that could be built in to the program as it goes forth after this program.
Any other questions from?
I guess maybe, just you mentioned that Matt's going to be up on the fourth floor, and the fourth floor is pretty empty in October, but it certainly fills up in April and May. And I guess the question is, is there enough space up there for not only Matt, but all the other students that come in during the summer to make the Town of Bridgewater as a greater community as it is?
They're all Leon's people up there, so.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec has a few. It's sort of, the way, the way the outgoing CAO managed that situation is that it's an item of discussion between planning and Parks, Recreation and Culture. I don't know if the same policy would continue or not. It's up to Richard to decide. Certainly, you know, we would have planned to have our same quota of spaces available. And that's going into our plan moving forward. But I think that there may be some other questions around how staffing, you know, how summer staffing or whatever levels may change going into the future, because our programs are changing.
Yeah, okay.
I would argue it's also not necessarily the most efficient layout. You could squeeze more people in there as well. Counselor McDonald.
So, offering free training to the tradespeople is, that's a big deal. That's a really big deal. And I would really hope that people will take advantage of that opportunity, but if they didn't, or, and I know this is probably tweaking down the road, but are there maybe incentives of some sort through some planning policies that might encourage? That, because I mean, it seems to me that the more people in the Town of Bridgewater who know what they're doing when they walk in that building can make recommendations and suggestions, and can pick up the equipment and work with it, the better off we are. You know, it kind of takes some of the work out of it for us. So I want to encourage as many people as possible to get on board. Or would that be more of a, in the tweaking, if people don't take advantage of it the way we had hoped? That would be more tweaking?
Yeah, it's, we don't really know what the uptake rate is going to be. You know, we know that our expectations of uptake for the CEF base program have been tempered a bit this year. There's a few things that we think may be causing that. But at the end of the day, this is a totally new product. That's never been offered before in this, in this market, and so it's hard to know. to know. We're basically going to do everything we can to get people in the program, both the participants who are homeowners as well as tradespeople. But at the end of the day, I mean, if you have suggestions or recommendations for us, we will certainly take any of your, you know, your thoughts into consideration, because it's important. It's important to show the uptake and to have that come through.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, someone prepared to put a, to make a motion, please. Counselor Thorburn.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater allocate PACE financing for up to 10 participating homes, Bridgewater homes, in the Clean Net Zero Program as existing PACE financing ceiling of $300,000 per fiscal year.
Have a second here, please. Secretary of State Tanner, we've kind of had our discussion, ready for the question.
Questions.
Question being called, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
We have a recommendation for permanent financing from our Director of Finance, Mrs. Kaiser.
So, this is a request to have council approve permanent financing for projects that have been completed. As I've noted in the report, we have a temporary borrowing resolution of approximately $5.1 million, and the borrowing request through Municipal Finance Corporation in this report is $1,957,570. You can see from the list that's been provided that the vast majority of that is for the downtown plan implementation, King Street and Bidgeon Wiskin Park. There's an additional $80,000 capital reserve loan. The last couple of budgets haven't contemplated capital reserve loans, this is an approval left over from, from a few years ago. So the total borrowing is just a little bit more than $2 million. There is some more borrowing coming, we're expecting a new fire truck, which is a little over a million dollars. We also have the clean water wastewater projects that we need to provide our share of. So borrowing is all required to be done through the Municipal Finance Corporation, and they require that you approve the resolution of preapproval that's attached to the report. They've suggested a maximum interest rate of 5.5%. It hasn't been nearly that the last number of debenture issues, but just to make sure that, that they're covered and that this doesn't have to come back to council for approval, it contemplates a maximum of 5.5%. So, if you had any questions, I'm happy to.
Pretty straightforward. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Don, do we have the option of shortening the 80,000? I noticed that there was a quarter-ton truck in there, and it always makes me nervous that these trucks get beaten around pretty good.
That one is just for five years.
Yeah.
But we can make it whatever we want. It means the report, or the payments will be higher on a annual basis.
Yeah, sure. Well, the payments aren't a whole lot of money anyway compared to the bigger one.
No, no.
Okay.
No, so certainly it can be shorter, totally.
Do you know, how long does a truck normally last for us?
I would say they, they go five years.
Yeah. See, I wouldn't want to get into a situation where you're paying something over $5,000.
Yeah, and that's precisely why we don't borrow from the Municipal Finance Corp.
Right.
Things like that.
Well, Mr. Feeney's in the back, we'll just say, the truck has to last five years.
Yeah, I'll just let him know.
10 years? You heard her here first.
Please to learn from them. Lake O'Five?
He says yes.
Okay. Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion, please.
Counselor Thorburn.
I move that whereas Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act provides that a municipality is authorized to borrow money subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and whereas a resolution of council to borrow for various purposes was approved by the Minister of Municipal Affairs on February 23, 2017, and whereas Clause 91.1b of the Municipal Government Act authorizes the council to determine the amount and term of and the rate of interest on each debenture, when the interest on a debenture is to be paid, and where the principal and interest on debenture are to be paid. And whereas Clause 91, subsection 2 of the Municipal Government Act states that in accordance with the Municipal Finance Corporation Act, the mayor or warden and clerk or person designated by the council by policy shall sell and deliver the debentures on behalf of the municipality at the price in sums in the manner deemed proper. Be it therefore resolved that the authority of Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act, the Town of Bridgewater borrow by issue and sale of debentures in the sum or sums not exceeding $1,957,570 for a period not to exceed 10 years, subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs. That the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures for the Town of Bridgewater in the amount that the mayor and clerk or the person designated by the council deems proper, provided the average interest rate of that debenture does not exceed the rate of 5.5%. That the debenture be arranged with the Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corporation with the interest to be paid semi-annually and the principal payments made annually, and that this resolution remains in force for a period not exceeding 12 months from the passing of this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn. Second here, please. Counselor Fager, any discussion on that? We've had our report from the Director of Finance. Question, hearing none. Questions being called, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you for that. Next item is Visitor Information Center sublease, so our Visitor Information Center out at exit 11, and M L A Suzanne Lounis-Croft currently leases space at the back of it and would like to lease space at the front of it. So if someone would like to make that motion, that would be great.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and approve the execution of a lease for the use of space at the Visitor Information Center complex with the M L A Suzanne Lounis-Croft.
Second here, please. Counselor Graves, any discussion? It's pretty straightforward. Deputy Mayor Tanner, less straightforward.
So, this is a partnership we have with the Municipal District of Lunenburg. Amy, I believe, was the point person on that. Who is the new point person on that from our side?
Patrick Hurdle.
Patrick Hurdle. And what is the actual rate we're charging these folk, the M L A? So, because it talks about the average cost per square foot of 2751, talks about what's included, but I can't figure out what the actual square footage rate is. Does that make sense? Do we have that?
I couldn't figure it out.
No? Okay, so if Bill can't figure it out, then what chance do I have?
Obviously.
In all seriousness.
I didn't figure, I just looked at the monthly rate and it seemed to be an acceptable rate for.
I assume she's paying $27 square foot.
That's what I thought.
I'm not sure that's true.
So the, so what she will, what the office will pay is 1449.01 per month?
Yes.
Okay.
Dedicated space was 336 square feet, I don't know if that, divide that into that fee, you give some common area.
There's shared space in that as well.
Yeah, so I'm just, for me, I wouldn't mind seeing a true breakdown of how this is being charged out, frankly. Not that I'm arguing that the numbers aren't right, that's not the right number, but I, you know, what's the cost of the shared space, what's the cost of the leased space?
So we could, we could get that information, and we could set this motion aside and bring back this motion to the next council meeting, if you're not comfortable moving forward with it. So we do have, we do have time.
I would prefer that in this particular case, just to know.
I think Counselor McGinnis would second that as well. So, I mean, we've, we've made the motion, we can just set the motion aside and bring it back to the next council meeting, if that's, if you'd like that information.
Sure.
It won't impact the lease because it doesn't start till November 1st.
I'm just happy to have someone in there.
Well, that's part of it.
Yeah.
Do you want detailed questions sent to somebody, or?
We'll take that and stop just to confirm, confirm the answer, I just don't have it in the favor today.
Okay.
And I, I do believe there's a cap on what M L As can pay for rent, so I would, it would be interesting to see if, if any changes, like if we're undercharging to make sure we're under a cap. I would think that we are, but I believe there is a cap. Okay, so we'll set that motion aside and bring it back to the next council meeting if, if there's no objections, everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Accounts to be written off, there's just a few there, if you want to just give us a quick synopsis of that, Mrs. Kaiser.
This is the annual report we bring to, to have accounts written off. There are just four on the list this year. The total is just over $1,000, which Nancy does a great job with the collection, so very minimal.
Yeah, that's good. Any questions on that? Someone please make a motion.
Yes, Your Worship, I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve a write-off of accounts as outlined in document 17-156 totaling $1,090.86.
Second here, please. Counselor McDonald, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried.
Business arising unfinished business, South Shore Stamp Club requests for donation in support of StampX17. And we had a presentation at the last council meeting with the, I believe it's called a cancel, where the post office cancels a letter using the new, the image of Bidgeon Wiskin Park, which I thought was pretty, pretty neat, and so they are requesting a donation or sponsorship of $100 towards their event, which is at the end of this month, I believe it's on Saturday, the 28th, at the Municipal Social Club, I think it starts at 10 o'clock.
And it's attracting a lot of people to the area, so yeah.
Yeah, so Counselor McGinnis, would you care to make that motion?
Oh, I would love to make that motion, Your Worship. I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve a donation sponsorship of $100 from the sponsorship account to South Shore Stamp Club for the StampX17 event featuring the launch of the new Bidgeon Wiskin Park pictorial postmark.
Can I have a second here, please? Counselor McDonald, any discussion? Question, hearing none. Questions being called, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Our last item of business is Municipal Awareness Week, which is November 20th to 26, 2017. The U N S M has sent us some ideas, I think some of them we do already, we're already out in the community promoting municipal awareness. You guys were out in the last couple of weeks, I think.
Yep.
Going out this week. I'm interested to have a conversation with Counselor Graves after council to hear how it went on the bus. Lots of great promotion of that on the bus, and council can kind of go through this list and decide if it wants to do any or all of the items on there. I know last year, I think we went to the, was this time last year, we went to the high school, and so we may want to organize that and do that again, and we may want to even divide and conquer, and some go to the junior high and some go to Parkview, and maybe even be yes. So, whatever you guys want, we'll kind of put our heads together and come up with some ideas. And we have an in-camera meeting following this meeting, and so if there's no other further business to deal with, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Tanner, second here. Counselor Fager, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
We have adjourned.
704, 705.